... The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, Liberty and Justice Are All."
Thank you very much. I call these ordered at 6:35. Just to start things off, I'm going to veer a little bit from the agenda here and have a presentation to make. I might, as everybody I hear, I believe, knows Diana Schindler is leaving her position as town administrator effective this Friday, July 29th. So what we wanted to do on behalf of the Select Board is to present you with the items. First of all, a, for those who can't see, certificate of appreciation that we all signed.
Oh, thank you so much.
Sure.
That's very nice.
And a card, and a card.
A little card, a very little card.
A big card.
Thank you so much.
On behalf of the Select Board, sir, I want to thank you for all that you've done for the town, your dedication, your hard work, and just really doing a great job. I'm going to really miss you, but we'll see you at the age club, too.
That's right. You'll see me back here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have the Chapter 61 Land and Re-Gun with Amanda Zadonis.
So I am back again. This is a little lot, it's out of the same parcel that I've been in before. This time it's for lot 3A, and you can go copy the agreement, as well as attach to the back of the document, copy the plan, and I can also send a copy of the recording of your permission. So this one's on a pleasant schedule.
Okay. Sorry, my pen went away again.
Move that we waive our option to purchase, is that the correct?
I am asking that you waive your option to purchase.
I would move that we waive our option to purchase.
I second. Okay, any further discussion? Motion's been made and seconded to waive our right to purchase option on this property. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Extinctions? You're on. Good to see you. Say hi to Alan.
Very good.
Okay. Okay, next item, no minutes to approve. Signature, we have payroll warrant.
Okay, payroll warrant, P-12-3, $171,257.12.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay. Bill warrant?
Bill warrant, W-12-2A, $4,248.40.
Okay, motion to approve? Some moved?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
And?
A W-12-4, $272,566.70.
Move to approve?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks. Now, we also have personnel change forms. Somewhere, it's in that blue, little dear. Well, this is a 16th May, we need to sign this. Diana, I don't see any PCFs or PRFs.
I don't, she didn't write nothing at this time, but I would conclude there's nothing at this time.
Okay. We're going to conclude that there aren't any personnel change forms or personnel request forms. I need to sign this. Okay, one-day licenses, nothing. Town owner agreements, nothing. Housing needs assessment, that's the grant, this one and this one, under the PVPC. These are invoices from PVPC. Now, we have a grant to pay for this one.
No, I believe those are invoices for the housing needs assessment, which the town is getting as a service from PVPC. They've been working on the housing needs assessment with the housing authority.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And that funding, I believe, is from Community Preservation.
Right, okay. Not a grant, but CPC. Okay, so we have these two items in here. One is in the amount of $1,197.32. An invoice, the other invoice is $1,968.93. And these are from the PVPC, and these have to do with the housing needs assessment, and the funding comes from the Community Preservation Committee.
Move to approve both bills.
Second.
Okay, those in, any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Six. Here's one for you. Actually, I have three here. Diana, four.
There's two for the CD.
Okay, CD fund, right, okay.
There's two for the CD.
Now, we have a CD fund as well, which is Community Development Fund Program. Again, from the Inver Valley Planning Commission, one in the amount of $4,837.92, and the other in $8,919.47. And these, again, the funding comes from?
I'm not, those are what, Community Development or Master?
Community Development Fund.
I'm not sure, Jess, on that. I haven't seen the invoice.
Voice. Well, maybe we could approve these subject to finding out who pays for them, so.
I'll move to approve, subject to funding.
Okay. Do we have a second? Assessor, you are hereby directed to disburse a portion of the monies received from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, so those are the DHCD grants.
DHCD.
Yes.
So we just found the funding.
Second.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
DHCD, this is going your way, this way. Okay, Town Administrators' Report, update of projects to be submitted.
So, in the packet?
Before, yeah, I think, within the interest of continuity, if we could have Reggie come in to hear the, you know, I'll go get it.
This is going to, actually, if you want to skip over that for a second, Mike, I'm also going to go make a copy of another document we've been working on together.
I need a blue pen first. More this time. I say yes, of course you might. Hello, Reggie. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Okay, so Diana went to make some copies. In the meantime, we can work on, no, we can't, this is under action list. Can we veer from the agenda that much?
Yeah, there's no time, there's no timeline.
We get the litter response from Town Council. If we could take a minute with them. Remember, I brought up, people throw those papers in your driveway and it really upset me.
Okay, so first, we have these FRTA contracts, which is Frankton Regional Transit Authority.
Why is that coming up so quickly for just a extension?
It's a conflict of interest form.
Oh, conflict of, yeah, wasn't there a contract?
There's a, there's a one-year extension on the contract. Demand response contract extension. Yep, so there's two originals here, it looks like. Okay, so, two originals of the demand response contract extension, and why is this? It's a desire of both parties to extend the agreement for a period of 12 months, beginning July 1st, 2011, and terminating June 30th, 2012. It actually...
This, this is the senior van, isn't it?
Right. So it's a contract dated July 1st, 2007, and has been extended, I think you should have said had been extended, to expire on June 30th, 2011. So technically, it expired, and this is a one-year extension.
And I'm just curious as to why we're doing a one-year extension, that's, you know, I mean, just why?
One year as opposed to?
Well, why, why are we doing this so, such rush, rush, and, and I assume it's for the, to do the senior van, right?
Yes.
I just don't...
I don't either, to be truthful. Diana, do you have any information on the FRTA, why they want to extend for one year? Because it was a four-year contract, it expired June 30th, and they want to extend for one year. Is that gas prices or something?
I don't know.
Protecting themselves.
But this is for the senior van?
Yes.
I'm making sure everybody's on the same page.
I mean, there's a lot, a lot of things developing in FRTA because they're building that new regional transit center, they have a new home, and a new garage, and so perhaps they're just anticipating those kinds of changes. I haven't heard of any problems.
Well, what, the assessment is going to be for $19,006.35, is that what we paid them every year? I mean, other than that, the terms of the contract are, is the $19,006.35 the same as other years?
As we came in the teach to school year?
Yeah.
Because everything else is the same, I mean...
We have to ask the council on aging directors on the issue.
She signed it, Mike, it's been executed by Gladys Phillips. You want to hold off on it?
Well, and I don't have a problem with Gladys signing it, but Gladys doesn't have to pay the bill.
Yeah, absolutely. So...
I mean, I just want to know whether that 19 is the same we paid, or is it more or less, or?
So what's your pleasure? Do you want to hold off on this?
Yeah, I think I'd like more information. I mean, there are other terms and conditions. I know we've signed these contracts in the past. The only term that's spelled out here is the dollars and cents, and is this more, what?
Okay.
Do we have a, do we have a budget here to see, is that 19,000 in their budget?
No, because that's something, we don't, I'm not sure that we pay that out of our budget. I don't think we have, I mean, they have a council on aging expense budget, but I don't think we have an FRTA van budget.
But where does that 19 come from?
Right.
I'm thinking it's part of what they get from the state, perhaps? They get grant money, but I really don't know. These are questions for Jen.
Well, this wouldn't hold.
Is this different, and this is different than the formula grant? Because every year, we just sign the formula grant.
We sign a grant, and, and, you know...
Right, I'm not sure if this is the same thing.
I don't know why it's all of a sudden a one-year extension with the dollars and cents in it.
Right, except it makes me wonder if it's, if it's something different.
The number's different, or the grant is the?
Or that it's a different program, or a different...
I guess I'd be reluctant to sign it until I know some more about it.
All right, okay. It's a motion.
I would, I'd move to table until we find more information.
I'll second that. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to table the FRTA demand response contract extension until we get some further information on who's going to pay the $19,006.
And what it's for.
And what it's for. Any further discussion? In favor?
Just one, one little bit of discussion. I hope this doesn't mean we're holding up the van for use. If it's expired June?
30th.
June 30th, does that mean they can't?
Well, they've been doing it for a month now.
Yeah, we have the van here. I, I don't think it would impact our use of the van, unless you have an issue that, you know, it becomes an extended type of situation. But as long as you take it up at your next meeting, I think it should be fine.
And there is a specific amendment in here under the contract entitled Compensation, Section 7, so it did move, looks like. Okay. Those in favor, then, of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to tabling this? Okay. Table, table. Pomeroy Anvil Monument, then we'll get to the litter response?
Oh, sure.
Okay. So, it looks like here, we're writing to inform you the Southampton Select Board voted and agreed to accept the gift of the Pomeroy Anvil Monument on July 12th, 2011. The Park Commission, the Historical Commission, and the Select Board voted and approved to place the Pomeroy Anvil Monument along Route 10 between the school and the fountain, but no closer than 25 feet through the northern corner of the schoolhouse. So this will be signed by the Southampton Select Board. I should put this in your packets, too. Okay. Any thoughts or ideas on this? Good for me. David, do you have any thoughts or ideas?
Well, I'm just here to answer any questions in case they arrive.
Okay. I had the sense, I thought that we were going to look at various possible locations.
We looked at various possible locations, and according to Massachusetts general laws, the Park Commission has the right to place anything within the park that they see fit. The Historical Commission and the Park Commission met together, the vote was, did the Park Commission place it in the park, the Historical Commission coincided in that vote. It's going to have to be more than 25 feet from the schoolhouse.
I move to approve.
Any questions, any thought given to putting it up on the school, on Pomeroy Meadow Road, for obvious reasons?
The school committee did not respond to any...
Just seemed like Pomeroy Meadow Road.
I know, but they didn't respond to the...
Okay, with that taken, I make the motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on this, which would be our signed approval of to place the Pomeroy Anvil Monument along Route 10 between the school, I'm assuming the old school.
What this document does is get the ball rolling. Once they get this, they will send the formal document of approval, and they get that, it's signed approval, and then they, with the board of selectmen and the historical commission, and everything gets partied.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got it. Thank you, Mr. President. So they have a mountain, a road, and an anvil. You can't beat that, it's a collection of memorabilia.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we have the litter response from Town Council.
I'd like to give people an update on this, just if I may, to put a square wrap. Nothing upsets me more than to walk down my driveway Sunday morning and have a newspaper wrapped in plastic that I don't want. And as I'm going down the street, I see them all over. A lot of people don't pick them up. And I, I think it's just terrible, because now we've got all these pieces of plastic that are not biodegradable, that are all over the place, it's just trash. And then, when the paper does get out of it, because the dogs like to chew on them, like my daughter and son, I have three dogs, the paper goes all over. And the easiest thing to remedy this, I know, would be for me to go and get this thing every day, but everybody's faced with this dilemma, and I'm sick and tired of it. I've called the Springfield newspapers, I've told them, I really appreciate you giving me your newspaper for nothing, but I don't want it, would you please not deliver it? That goes on for a couple of weeks, and then away it happens again. So, I brought this to the attention because I feel this is a problem throughout town and throughout the entire area, and I'm sick of seeing all that litter go all over. So I asked for a review on it, and this is what we got.
So, we have some immense enforcement.
Pardon me?
It looks like we have some teeth, we just have to enforce it.
Yeah, well, I think what I'm going to do is put a complaint into the police, I'll call the Springfield newspapers one more time and be a gentleman again, and if it happens again, I'm going to call the police and file a registered complaint, and then show the chief this, and that way, that's what he's got to do, just to make it happen.
Well, I mean, the only one that doesn't, may or may not apply is the third one, GL-265, Section 35, and that's only for a public way, but as most people don't remember, the pavement is not just the public way, it's the, usually it's a 50-foot right of way, so...
Yeah.
Even if they're five feet into your driveway, they're probably still on, on the public way.
Yeah, under, under the first part, GL-270-16, criminal, its coverage is very broad, any sort of trash, any sort of depositing that trash, including from a vehicle, which this happens, on any highway, public land, water, or property of another, which that would be project property, so that would be inclusive. The fine is $5,500 for the first offense, and $15,000 for subsequent offenses. So, it certainly got teeth in, I, thank you very much, Diana, for contacting legal. I'm, I'm going to...
Why don't we, instead of you calling, why don't we send something from the Select Board? Put some, put a little bit of official weight behind it.
With a copy of this.
Well, yeah, or whatever you want to do, but some official letter from us saying, um, because I don't know whether, there's a general consensus, people want these or don't want them. You don't want them, obviously, but I don't know whether you're, you're...
Well, there were some people in the last discussion who wanted them, too.
Yeah, so you can't certainly ban them from town.
But wouldn't the people that want them pick them up? And then whatever's remaining would be considered litter?
Perhaps in a letter to clarify, and the last time, Anne said she liked it, and that's great, and she brought, I like debate, because she brought back to me that I wasn't thinking of. I was just very upset with this, and I'm bullheaded. But she really looks forward to it, like a lot of other people.
Not me, my husband.
Okay. To be fairness to everybody, why don't we write the Springfield newspapers, or any other newspapers that does this, or, a letter stating that it's illegal for them to throw anything there, blah, blah, blah. If a customer calls and says they do not want it, they must comply, otherwise, we go to Plan B, and that's playing rough.
I, I, yeah, I think something that, you know, it would be easier to ban them from town, but I think there are people who are going to want them, and they can't do that.
Yeah.
But, you know, if requested, they have to stop delivery.
I did that, I requested that they stop, and they did, they stopped.
They did.
My place.
Well, Mike Carroll, your idea, just, didn't get the letter.
He's bullheaded, that's why.
Well, he's just like me, I guess.
Okay, so, I like, I like your idea.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen send a letter, in this case to the Springfield newspapers, stating that we've had complaints from residents that newspapers are thrown in their yard, and they're not solicited by the people. We would hope that the people that do not want these things will send something, or a phone call, to the Springfield newspapers, saying they do not wish these papers. And that way, stop delivery, period. Otherwise, we've got to resort to this, which we certainly don't want to do. And we should have a notice in the paper with it also, to inform the public that they have the right to do this.
We can put it on the TV.
That'd be good, too.
Yeah. I'll second that motion. That was a motion.
Thank you, Mike, yes, of course, kind of long, but, you know...
Long for you.
Yeah.
A perpetual motion. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. I'm going to paraphrase the motion, basically that the Springfield Republican, in this case, shall adhere to customer requests to be removed and recirculated.
Well put.
Wonderful.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, to write a letter on behalf of the Select Board to the Springfield Republican to that effect. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you got it. Thank you. Now, we're back then to Town Administrators' Report. And Diana has made copies here, status of projects. Reggie, do you have one of these?
Well, actually, Reggie created, that's the list Reggie created. I, I did a list for you in your packet, just on the actual projects that are, that are mostly being managed either by you, there's a couple of them by you, but mostly by committees, other boards and committees. So, you've seen this before in a form, I've given it to you as we've gone along with projects, so basically, I just updated and added a couple new projects that are going on. But these are all the projects that are either, have just come to conclusion, or are in process. Or, one phase has come to conclusion, and now we're on to a different phase of the project. So, but all of them are, in some way or another, relevant. So, and, and I just wanted to give you this list, because this is, Reggie had created this list, a very comprehensive list of all of the projects in the office, but in addition to just these projects that are on your two-page list, it also, you know, pretty much everything in the office that's been worked on, including contracts, and, you know, the furnishings, the planning, the open space plan, the Commonwealth Capitol, and on and on. She put together this, and we went over it together, and I've informed her where all the files are, both the actual files and the electronic files. So, I, but I just kind of wanted you to see that, you know, there's, there's an extensive amount of things going on, and this is not, this is just things that were sort of under my purview, and then, of course, Reggie has...
I stole yours.
Reggie has her own list, under her job.
I've seen it done.
But this is basically stuff that her, her and I met on and went over, and I think that she's, hopefully, aware of where everything is, and in terms of, I mean, in terms of where the location of files and stuff are.
Okay, good. Okay, Reggie, from your perspective, what do you think about all this?
Very wonderful.
Okay. Do we have any questions about any of this?
Yeah, I also wanted to kind of present this detail to you, this detail, in case you do have any comments, or questions, or concerns about any of the information on here. I mean, it's pretty much just a synopsis of everything that has gone on, or is going on now. And I don't know if there's anything I can, any questions I can answer. I mean, you know, some of the things I didn't put on the project list that you've worked on in the last four years, but sort of, you know, may need to be picked up and looked at again, is certainly sewer infrastructure, as part of your master planning process, that's been brought up. The DPW, I'm not even sure the DPW's on this list, but it's something that we had talked about several years ago, and kind of, again, left, got tabled at some point, I think, at a town meeting, or got voted down, so, something you might want to consider, certainly while Ed's here, still would be great.
Are these checks and arrows?
Well, the checks are when we went over it, I just checked off everything that we, that we had gone over everything, and, you know, again, it was more like, basically, to let Reggie know where everything is, where everything's located, but I wanted you to also know that, you know, there's a lot of things that are in progress, or in process, that, you know, not just the projects, but, you know, certainly some of the legal issues are on here, and the contracts that we've got, different contracts. You have all your contracts now that you've done, and your employees and unions are all on the same schedule, all expiring on June 2012, except for your dispatcher, which haven't concluded, but...
I'm running away with you for that year.
So, so really, what that means is, you know, very soon, you should be putting together, you know, kind of a schedule, to, to start negotiating with those, because really, by October 1st, you should start, you know, breaking it down, and however you're going to, whoever you're going to do first, or however that's going to work, you really need to start thinking about it, so you don't go for lengthy periods of time without contracts.
Well, and you're not going so far away that we can't reach out and find you?
Oh, absolutely not, no. Yeah, you can reach out and find me. And I've given Reggie all my contact information, everything's on my computer, it's all organized by, all my emails are organized by year, so, and, and I have everything, I also have a project section in my computer, everything's organized by project, but she'll have access to all the, all the emails and all the folders, and, I mean, there's a couple committees, I think, that are really going to need your support, that's going to be the Energy Committee, they've got that big ESCO project going on right now, and that is something that I was kind of championing for them. And we have an owner's agent working with us from the state, paid for by the state, so they do have a professional working with them, but there's going to be some decision-making that needs to get done, probably in the next couple months, and that's something you guys want to be looking at. And then, Public Safety Complex, we had tried to schedule a meeting, an organizational meeting in June, and we got our signals crossed, and ended up not posting it properly, so I didn't reschedule that at this point, but an organizational meeting will need to be scheduled for that, and Reggie knows about that, so. And I think that, and then, of course, the big thing I want to point out, you've got two plans, your open space plan, I think I've, I might have explained this before, but annually, for the last four years, I've been applying for the DCS grant, which has been funding LibriField, well, it funded the acquisition of LibriField, and the hope is that each year, we put in a grant for the development of the actual construction. So we did put one in for FY12, again. If you do, if you're awarded that grant, you know, there is an administrative component where you'll have to do reporting and, and such, and you'll find that out on October 1st.
You'll have to do what?
You'll have to do reporting, you know, basically, there's, there's grant administration that'll have to be done, and it's a reimbursement program, so you only get back what you spend, and Ed's aware of that. But in order to apply for that grant, in order to apply for any money through EOEA, which is the money you also used for the CEROL property, to acquire that 200 acres of that on Wolf, Wolf Hill, you have to have an open space plan, an accepted open space plan on, filed with the EEA. The town has one, but it expires in September of this year, 2011. At the Capital Improvement Committee, we were, they tried to fund it, but were unable to. If you remember, we basically gutted Capital Improvement this year, and only bought the Cruisers. So right now, you don't have any funding to update that plan. The last time, we, CPA originally had tried to have a private citizen work on it, and, and did get... and did get some things done for a minimal amount of money, but it really never got done. There's a lot of requirements from EOA to do. So, when we ended up having to update it, to make it an approved plan, we ended up going to PVPC.
Can we use CPA money for that?
That's a good question. You might be able to.
Use CPA money to update the open space plan? It seems like that might be a...
Good, that's a very, very good question, Mike. You might be able to. So, that's something Reggie should look into, but...
What did you say, it expires, the open space?
It expires in September of 2011.
But that's not gonna affect the fact our grant's already in there.
Your grant's already in for FY12, so you're good.
It'll affect next year if we apply it.
Next year, right. My, I'm simply trying to get, get across to you that you, if you let that expire, you'll, you have to put in, I mean, you have to basically update it and have another plan approved by EOA. And you have to...
If you let it expire, you have to start all over from...
No, 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 no. It doesn't matter. If it expires, it, it doesn't, you have to do an update, and you have to do a public participation process, and then you have to resubmit, resubmit that update. PVPC had given us a fairly hefty quote of, I think it was around 12,000, which I thought was a lot. You might be able to work with them, maybe they could take a look at it. I don't know that the update would be that extensive. Also, I did talk to some planners at PVPC, Jessica Allen, who's working on our master plan, and there might be a way to piggyback the update of your open space plan on your master plan. Because in your master plan, you have to do a whole open space chapter. So, EOA, Melissa Cryne at EOA had said that you can do that, but you just have to make sure you fulfill all the requirements of the open space plan, which primarily are gonna be the public participation piece. Because you have to have a public hearing, and you have to have input from the public, which has to be incorporated into the plan, and then you have to have goals and objectives that have to be, I think, also have some public input. So, anyway, so you don't, so I would check CPA, that's a great idea, see if it can be funded that way, but I would, I'd really try to get that done, you know, sooner than later, so you don't miss out on the opportunity for the EOA money. Not even just for LaBrie Field, but if you move forward with any properties you're thinking of acquiring, you could use that money for the acquisition of those properties, to any open space acquisition.
Yeah, I have a thought, if I may interrupt you for a moment, if I may. There was some mention about going to the Community Preservation for funds, okay? We have a meeting next Wednesday. If we're interested in that, could we please generate a letter to the Community Preservation requesting funds and fill in on everything, what you need, what it's for, blah, blah, blah. That way, we can vote on it and get this done very rapidly.
We'd have to have an estimate, though, for how much we think it's gonna cost.
Well, they had said up to 12,000.
Even if we had something...
Could say up to...
Say not to exceed X amount. That way, we'll put a limit on it, and that's what we gotta do legally.
So, I move that we request from CPA, for them to consider funding the open space plan up to $12,000.
Good, I'll second that, sir.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to request from CPC funding up to the amount of $12,000 for the open space, to update the open space plan. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
And just because we have a change in, who's gonna send the letter between the two of you? Are you gonna do it before you leave on Friday, or...
No.
Okay. Just so we don't... Yeah, that's fine. I just don't want someone saying, "I thought you were doing it, and I thought you were doing it."
I have two, two or three small projects on my desk that I'm gonna wrap up, and that's it. Reggie's taking on all the new stuff at this point.
I just wanted a clear definition of who...
Who's on first?
Who's on first?
Okay, so that's great. So, open space plan. So, the next thing, I also just wanna remind you, your master plan is, it's probably, I think originally was intended to end June of 2012, but the visioning process in the year, the first year, took a little bit longer getting that organized and getting, getting that completed. So, I would say the project's probably about six to eight months behind. So, the estimated completion date of the project now is June of 2013, or sooner, but I also wanna remind you that you, you do not have any funding right now for FY12. So, it's going to be okay, because we just started using FY11 funds, because we're behind, but in probably April or May, you're gonna run out of money for the master plan, unless you, unless you put aside some more money. And so, you're going to be, you know, nearly complete with your master plan, but you're gonna be short probably the, you know, the, the key stage, which is gonna be the, the, sort of coordinating the plan, getting the plan pulled together, and with all the chapters, it's probably gonna be, you know, 10 to 12 chapters. And then, the public, the implementation piece and the public process piece that needs to be done at the end of the plan to also build consensus and cohesion around the plan, which is this town's 30-year plan, 30-year vision, is gonna be what you don't have funding for. And that's really probably gonna be the most important piece. So, I'm sure Hank will come and talk to you about it before too long, but I just wanted to remind you that those are the two planning processes that have been instrumental in getting you significant grant funding, and the master plan will also, there's, there's a, there's a whisper at the state level that your, your master, a master plan, any zoning changes will have to be tied to a master plan. That's legislation they're working on. So, you're gonna, you're gonna wanna get that master plan done, and you're, you know, you're, you're three-fourths into it at this point, so you, you don't wanna leave it like that.
So, because we're eight months behind, we still have funds to continue?
Right. You'll have money to get through most of FY12, if not, you know, to the end, but, because they're actually, they usually break in the summer, so they don't need until September again. And then, like I said, you'll have enough money probably to get through next year's planning process, but they're still working on the chapters, you know? The last year is the, like I said, kinda bringing the plan together and doing that implementation and public process piece, which is, is gonna be really important. And I think, although you may not see it, you may or may not, but there is a, you know, there's momentum right now, and if you, if you kinda back off of that, even if it's for six months or something, you're gonna lose that momentum. You've had the best master planning committee in terms of, a committee of that size staying engaged in this process, so you don't wanna lose those folks at this point.
That's right. Our next meeting is in September. Yes. We were gonna meet this Thursday, but there are too many folks who are on vacation.
So.
Thanks for that update.
And in, in terms of charter, I did talk to Greg today, so you have, you're gonna have, you're gonna see some charter stuff tonight, you're gonna see the agreement, but you, we talked like a month ago about PEG stuff. We have all, we, we now have all the video equipment here in the building, making arrangements to install it. I think that's gonna be done, well, Greg's on vacation, but when he gets back, that, that's gonna, that process is gonna happen. And then, after that, you're gonna have to, you know, you might wanna take a look at that again, now that you're gonna have your contract done, you're gonna know what your annual grant or your annual operation costs that you have coming in is gonna be, it's gonna be 1% of that gross revenue, about 17,000. And then, you're gonna have that capital grant on the table for 25,000. And just remember, when we did, when you did your last license renewal, there was a clause in the license renewal that you have to ask for that money. And, and over the 10 years that you had the license, no one ever asked for it. So, it wasn't until the last year of the license that we asked for it, and that meant it had been, that, it's a grant that's passed through to the subscriber, so it had to be amortized over a much shorter period of time, meaning the subscribers had to pay more per month for that. So, be careful about that. I haven't really looked at your, what you're gonna look at tonight, but you're gonna take it home with you and review it, the contract, the, the proposed agreement renewal, but you wanna make sure that if you have to ask for it, that you do it at the outset of the contract.
And that's the PEG?
Yeah, that's sure, that's gonna be your capital outlay, and you're only gonna get 25 for the whole contract, which is a five-year contract. So, so you don't necessarily need the money now, because we just did a few, you know, a significant amount of capital outlay, but you should just keep, you know, get the money, so you don't, so it can be amortized over the life of the contract, is what I'm saying. I think that's it. Those are, those were kinda the things I just wanted to hit on. Everything else is...
I was just curious about the bike path.
Yeah. About what's going on? So, the Greenway feasibility study is complete. It's been done for about a couple months. We had a really great public information session right before town meeting, in terms of materials. The materials were really good, and we have copies of those, so we could reproduce those to have another meeting. I had suggested to the Greenway Committee that they in fact do that, that they have another couple public information sessions about the study itself, what the conclusions were. And then, one, a step that the board needs to work with, with the Greenway Committee, you know, coordinating with Reggie, is meeting with the railroad officials. Because we had met with the railroad officials when we started the study, which is about two years ago now, and we both had appraisals done, so the town has an appraisal, and the railroad has an appraisal. And then, after that, the feasibility study kicked off, and there was really never a meeting of the minds on the appraisal, and that was sort of the next step with the acquisition. So, there's sort of two things that need to be done. Right now, you need to continue work on the acquisition, if in fact you want to acquire it, and you can use that EOA money, because that's open space. It's a park, it's a linear park for, for purposes. Also, DCS, just as a side note, also has grant trail money that's specific for trails through that same agency, but a different program, so you could also get money there. And I had suggested to the Greenway that they, they take out that list of grants that was generated as part of the feasibility study, and they pick out the ones for acquisition and start exploring them and finding out what the requirements are and what they need to put, because sometimes you have to put things in place ahead of time before you can really apply. So, I had suggested that to them. But the, but the big thing is to try to keep some momentum going. And I would say that the board, if, if there's an interest in acquiring the trail, you know, that sooner than later, you contact the railroad and, and open that discussion back up with them.
Would the, would the Railway Committee that we have, Calla Railway, are they going to do that, or are they gonna be instructed to do that, or should we be meeting with them, or Reggie, or whatever?
I think that you should, either you should or Reggie should meet with the Greenway Committee, because they were sort of a Greenway feasibility committee, and their charge was really to carry out this study and see if the, if the, the trail was feasible. Now that it is, and we have a sense of the cost, I mean, it's feasible depending on how much you wanna pay, but we have those costs, I think the Greenway Committee is probably a little bit uncertain of what their next step should be.
Then I would suggest we have a joint meeting with them before we do anything further.
Yeah.
In September, early September, have a joint meeting with them, sit down and see, see who's gonna take the next step and what the next step is gonna be.
Yeah, I fully agree with it. I don't wanna see that opportunity go by the wayside, I really, truly don't. I see how valuable it is with me, I, I use it every day, and it's just wonderful. Really is.
And we certainly have, I mean, there's never been the level of support there is for that Greenway now, so, I mean, we, there's still opponents, but there's a lot more vocal proponents, including legislators. I mean, I think Jackie said something a few weeks ago, where John Olver actually approached her at a public event, asking her, Senator Knappick's office is very interested, they, they are, every time their rep or aide come here, comes here, he asks about the progress of that. So, so we've got legislators that, and, and if you apply for grant money, those, that's the time you wanna get the legislators involved. They should be writing letters to the grantor agencies, you know, and supporting those grant applications, too, if that's the road you go.
Yeah, shouldn't we have this meeting, joint meeting, sooner the better, so we don't miss any opportunities?
Well, I just think you're gonna run into problems with vacations, I guess.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I mean, you can have a meeting, but we'll have too many people coming. Come September, we should catch everybody.
Yeah, that's a valid point.
Maybe the first meeting in September, for lack of a better...
Mm-hmm. Good.
And your two, those committees, the Energy Committee and Greenway, Energy's down two people, and Greenway's down one person, so that would be the other thing is to, especially with the Energy Committee, I think it's really important you try to get two more people. And I've been trying to, you know, I've been asking lots of people, I've gotten no takers, but if you know anybody, if anybody knows anybody. Because that ESCO project is fairly large, there's still that whole green communities piece that you might wanna look at, because there's supposedly gonna be money coming to towns if they're green communities. There's the, you know, certainly getting a baseline, there's a whole free website right now for Mass Energy Insight, which is a, it basically gives you, it could give you tons of reports on usage, you know, Mike's asked about usage of the old versus the new, this building, there's reports on there, and the Energy Committee just, I think, really needs a full complement of volunteers to, because there's actual work that has to get done, so.
So, you undo your motion, you're just gonna do a meeting in September? I'll move that we invite the Greenway Committee to our first meeting in September.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to invite the Greenway Committee to our first meeting in September to discuss status and next steps.
I think we should frame it as a joint meeting, so they post it and action can be taken at that meeting.
So, motion's been actually taken, we made seconded, and that we propose to the Greenway Committee that we hold a joint meeting, first meeting in September?
Do we have a date on that first meeting? 23rd of August is our...
Right.
It's the 30th, so it would be the 6th?
6th. Okay, so September the 6th?
Is that a regular meeting, like, for open night for, is that an open night for the town hall?
I would believe so, yeah.
All right, that'd be good.
So, September 6th.
Any further discussion on that motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Moving on, Evan, we are now down to discussion items, Section 6, first being Town Administrator Position.
I'd like to lead that off. I, I just wanna be clear, I'm making a motion that we appoint Reggie as our temporary for 12 weeks, as permitted by the bylaw. Whatever position title might be, Town Administrator for now. Interim Town, interim, temporary Town Administrator, if that's enough adjectives.
It's actually an emergency position.
It is emergency. Yes, it is, so it's an emergency, it's an emergency appointment of the interim temporary Town Manager.
I think interim would suffice.
All right, interim Town Manager for 12 weeks, as permitted by the bylaw.
May I add to that, if I may? You're okay, it's okay.
I think since her responsibilities will be tremendous compared to what she's doing now, I think her pay should be $45,000, and then it's interim of what she was making now, and what Diana was making, that's kind of halfway. And in this way, she'd be compensated fairly for all of her efforts and much, much more additional work.
Make that part of my motion to a point?
Thank you, and I'll second that, sir.
I technically need a second over here, because you added...
Okay. I'll adopt, I'll adopt that part as part of my motion to a point. Any second. And this is a 12-week appointment, and it was something I was gonna think of, I can't remember what it was. Age. Oh.
The hours per week?
Well, it would be, it's a 40-hour position.
Right.
Now, she has benefits as a, you have some benefits as a part-time employee. Oh, you're full-time? Oh, then, then you still have your benefits, but she still has her benefits from her position.
Okay.
I know this is addition to that, but could she have an assistant to help her, because there's so much work?
My suggestion would be, I think let her get her feet on the ground and decide what she needs, and then come to us in case, does that seem reasonable? I mean, we're into our, if, if anything, we're into our slow period right now. And let her get her feet wet before she tries, starts trying to teach someone her old job and her learn a new job, rather than take on that responsibility in addition and see what we can do, if she comes to us and can't. Now, I know what I wanna say, that clearly this is, the salary range is for the temporary position, not anticipating, because that job has been scored by the PQB, I believe.
Personal Policy Procedures Board? I believe it was scored.
It was.
It was scored back in 2006, 52.
At 52. So... The Administrator's job was scored. So, I mean, this is just for an interim, for the 12 weeks, and then we'll reevaluate at the end of 12 weeks.
Also, well, we got a motion on the table, we should...
Well, I have a similar concern about the motion, too, that Reggie, should you decide
Well, I have a similar concern about the motion too, that Reggie, should you decide to accept this, if it does become overwhelming, that you let us know sooner rather than later? Because we don't want to find you sitting out in the parking lot mumbling. You know, we should, yeah, so we get stressed out to come to the board first. So, that was my concern. Okay, so we have a motion been made and seconded, I can repeat the motion basically, that we appoint Reggie in the emergency appointments for a 12-week interim appointment as interim Town Administrator with an annualized salary for that 12 weeks equivalent to $45,000 with the attendant benefits. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
Oh, I know what I want to say, you're here until Friday, correct?
Actually, I'm taking Thursday and Friday off, so tomorrow's my last day actually working.
Oh, I was going to make this appointment effective Monday and part of that motion, but that seems kind of foolish now.
You make a separate motion into the.
Well, but no, actually, because you're going to draw.
Yeah, it's my vacation, I mean.
Yeah, you're drawing salaries through Friday. Unfortunately, I guess I would make this appointment effective the following Monday so that there's, we don't draw down any accounts excessively because of pay.
We would need to amend the motion, or?
No, I'll move that the appointment be effective, whatever Monday is, is it?
I'll second that first. The motion's been made and seconded that Reggie's appointment be effective as of Monday, August 1st. Any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just so there's clarity.
And I just wanted to hand you this, Reggie had asked if I'd write her a letter of reference, and I did, although it was a big point. My old mind, my old mind on it.
Little mind, little mind. Good luck. Okay, I'm Ray Anvil, we have an Anvil. Now we have, anything, any further discussion on that? And moving on into Melissa Pike and the letter, Andrew Travails with Charter Communications, I believe. Can you find one over there, Melissa, by the cake? You can have some cake if you'd like.
Melissa, do you own that cake?
Okay, we appreciate your letter, which very clearly spells out that you've had some situations with Charter such that they don't think it's economically feasible to move the pole that's on your property, and there's this idea of a prescriptive easement, which is a new term for me, but I'm certainly not an attorney, so.
Well, by the way, it's as a profession, because they've been there for 25 years to obtain the rights to property.
Right, okay.
Although they've never, the question doesn't, we have to that. Their position is, they've been there, they don't want to move the pole. It's not completely feasible for us to move 80 feet on our property, so I should probably just move by driveway.
Can I, why are you moving, why the request to move the pole? What's going on?
It was vacant lot, my father purchased the land from the federal government last summer.
Is this the, oh, this is the corner Jonathan Judd and Coleman?
It's a vacant, the A H.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, we went through together, and all of that, and we're in the house of ecstasy and what have you. Unfortunately, the driveway is accessed by Coleman Road, which is actually the official address, point to Coleman Road. And the existing telephone, excuse me, utility pole owned by Western Mass Electric is designated driveway. Contacted Western Mass Electric and Jack Sapilo came out through the surveys, there's no problem to move it, we can ease it along the street, move it over 80 feet, just request that cable and telephone remove themselves so we can take down the pole. So I had to read through my very cumbersome notes, and I'm sorry about that, it was just eight weeks of line of cable. They never, they didn't give any charges to start with, but they ensured no problem up until I had to make this process. And now refuse, actually, out of that, they refuse to get off the pole. And said that if, as a landowner, I don't want that to move, there'll have to be some underground cabling for about 80 feet that I should be responsible for, like, $100,000 or $300,000.
I saw the estimate, but I didn't see anywhere where they itemized out their estimates.
Not much, there's three lines.
I know, but they never said 10 hours of tech time or anything, have you requested an itemized?
I adjusted everything, can you please, you know, show me how this makes any sense? Certainly, give any, you know, my father and, you know, properties and management, this is what we do for a living, so, $5,000, I think a fee is a lot. It's unworthwhile anyway, even if there wasn't the, I think it's gross E O E A charge.
They didn't try and justify it by saying we need to add a gizmo on that pole that we didn't have to add.
Everything was provided.
Then I, then, I read your letter in detail. My suggestion, and we haven't signed the contract, not that I, not that we can use this not to sign the contract, but I think a letter from us to Tom Cohen indicating that we've got a complaint and we'd like to have Mr. Cohen attend the meeting to explain this.
Smart move, yeah.
He, I think the hardest part of my final conversation with him, which he contacted me, but that was based on my communications with the Department of Telecommunications, I didn't seek him out, I didn't call him. Was, it is my financial cost, and I ask for what you ask for.
Well, I think, and I'm seeing part of our letter asking him to come is asking to bring an itemized estimate as to the cost of moving this pole.
We've requested a real engineer come out to the property, not a tech, and somebody who can really justify a fee with conduit.
But that.
The specific request is to ask them to remove themselves from the pole.
I'm not asking for service, I'm asking for 80 feet.
So they've got to move it from.
A brand new pole, which is down.
Right, they now have to, they have to take it from one pole and move it to the other.
Right, that's what I mean, so it's not moving the pole, it's moving the service.
But I'm, the question's going to be whether or not the new pole is outside the length of their lines and whether they've got to.
It is, I unfortunately, that's going to be a diagram for you, like, I thought I provided it. The situation is on the opposite side of the street, there's a pole, it connects to the existing pole and it goes underground there. So when I move it back 80 feet.
They've got to go on there.
They instruct 80 more feet of conduit underground to access the folks on Jonathan Judd.
And for that reason, it may be expensive, but I would ask, I would ask Mr. Cohen from this board to attend our meeting and bring an itemized estimate as to why this, the cost is there. And we still haven't signed the contract.
And his only response, if I can continue, was if my father chooses to purchase their services, he would reduce it by $2,000.
His famous words.
So it made it more difficult for me to quantify the cost.
I would move that we send the letter, ask Mr. Cohen to attend and supply us with an itemized estimate for the cost of this since the contract is still pending.
As you said earlier, Mike, can we use that?
No, we can't, but I'd like to throw in.
Can we use Melissa's argument to not sign the contract?
I bet you it's going to help them a lot. Yeah, I mean, I didn't say we weren't going to sign it, I just said this contract is still pending.
We're very concerned about this issue and we would like his utmost consideration.
Especially if you buy two years of service, the famous last words is, I'll reduce it by $2,000, leaves me to believe, you can reduce it by $2,000 right now.
Right.
I just got deal with Verizon, they signed it for two years and my new.
Then you get a new phone.
Yeah.
I get, I'll move, I made that motion, I didn't.
Okay. Seconding, motion's been seconded, okay, so the motion's been made and seconded then to contact Tom Cohen, direct VP of Government Relations at Charter to come here with an itemized bill and an explanation of the costs to be incurred, potentially incurred in your situation. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And can I make a suggestion, just for the pure politics of the situation, that we not sign any contracts put in front of us for by Charter for the time being?
Are you dabble?
Huh?
Are you dabble here? I've got a point of interest here, I know we're asking Mr. Cohen to come to the room, there's an itemized bill right here.
Well, there is.
From what I can see. Yeah, labor, materials, but maybe he could explain, we could ask him to explain the entire situation.
Total labor cost, four grand for total labor. And it isn't, it isn't the materials that are classic.
Labor.
No, no. I mean, that's not unusual in this day and age.
No, I'm out for having him here though, and explain why.
Now, do go ahead.
Okay, that's true, that's a good catch. Okay.
I think it also might be worthwhile too, when you're talking about your new contract, to be honest, I haven't reviewed it extensively, but there should be, it seems like you've got to figure out a way too that you guys can, that they can help you or support you in solving customer complaints because you have, you are inundated with them often and they are, specifically Mr. Cohen, is rather arrogant and dismissive in his responses to, to basically your constituents.
But the way we get around that is we haul him in here every time because he's VP for Government Affairs and that's what he's supposed to be is here.
If you can get him here, that's great.
He doesn't have to deal with the public, but he's supposed to deal with us.
Yeah, yeah. It's unfortunate though, it's always a battle.
Truly. Okay, are we ready to move on then?
Yes.
Okay, new Town Hall updates, custodial. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Melissa. Did you know I went to school here with your Uncle James? In this room, some time ago, we're back, I'm back.
Couldn't get out, huh?
Well, I always thought of the pole, I don't know.
Oh, Town Salon Aging.
So, at the last meeting, just in terms of the updates for this building, you had, you had a couple of issues, one of was, why isn't the kitchen done? The pressing question. But you also had asked if I would check with the building inspector and find out if the room was inhabitable and could the seniors move in? And the answer is yes, they can. So, I did let, I asked the day after you'd asked, and Rich said absolutely, obviously there's no kitchen, but we're just going on the presumption there's no kitchen. So they can move in, so I went and talked to Jen Peliquin, and they, the Council on Aging subsequently had a meeting, I think last week, and generated this list that's in your packet, which is basically, they're now requesting you to get some of these things done.
This with the big arrow?
That's, they'd also like a sign, they'd like some signage, so that's, that's something they would like. But the list is primarily painting and cleaning, which I think Joe Muse has done a good part of at this point. Whether it will have to be redone once the painting's done and the moving is done, I'm not sure. And then they wanted the sign, which is attached as a mock-up. So, and I think Jen talked to Ed, what was the, do you know what the outcome of that was? Well, I know she did because she told me, but I think Ed, I don't know that, I think Ed said they could do the, I think Ed said they could do the painting on a rainy day, if I recall.
Painting, are they speaking?
Well, if you look at the room, there's sections of it that aren't painted, and not, not just behind the appliances, there's actually, when you walk in the room, there's a half a wall that you're facing, the facing wall that isn't painted.
Why didn't that get painted by the contractor?
I have, we have no idea.
Why are we painting and if the contractor was supposed to paint?
The contractor has been in and I, and I, I, this past week, they were supposed to come in and touch on the final punch list, I don't know what the results of that were, I think they were here yesterday. But there has been talk back and forth about, you know, Five Star doing it, us doing it, Five Star doing it, us doing it, so I don't know that Five Star said they wouldn't do it, they just haven't done it.
This is crazy, I am ready to blow a gasket over this damn kitchen and senior center. This, if Five Star was supposed to paint that wall, a letter should go out, paint the damn wall.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I believe it's on their final punch list, and I don't know what the result is.
But it's time to final, we're a year later.
No, I understand.
The final punch list should be done.
Right, I know, but they were, they're just.
You shouldn't be jerking around with a punch list now.
I know.
We still.
I know, you're on the committee, I'm sorry.
But that's all right. We still owe them $30,000 retainage and.
How did it get down to 30, I thought it was 55?
We paid them, I think 25 or 30. And, no, that was at the demand and advice of our legal attorney, if you recall, how I'm going to pay you. They said pay it or we are overbought, so we did. What are you doing, you're?
Who's got the final punch list? Who's got a final punch list?
Well, okay, the last meeting of the Building Reuse Committee, there was four of us there. And Gary said that they were going to take over doing the kitchen, the Building Reuse Committee. Now, we've got the mandates, we should send this to Gary.
We should send this back to them, to be honest with you, but.
Yeah, yeah. But we should send it to Gary, saying here, and what a recommendation from us, maybe instead of putting in a three-bay sink, we buy a dishwasher.
There's a three-bay sink in there. There's a three-bay sink in there.
There's one two and one one.
One, yes.
Total of three days.
There's two, a two-bay and then another sink separate.
Okay, well, we've got to have a hand washing sink, okay. After the meeting, I'll go and take over.
Can we just ask for a copy of the punch list for us and?
We have, we've repeatedly asked for, we haven't, it hasn't manifested yet from.
That's what I'm getting to know. So at the last meeting of the Building Reuse, which is right after our last meeting, Building Reuse Committee says, okay, we're going to take care of this, this is our formal charge anyways. And when we had as selectmen, we had water damage, we couldn't go in there because, you know, why did this happen, blah, blah, blah. And then we had the board of health officials, so that took several, several months, that brings us to today. So anyways, the Building Reuse Committee said, we'll take care of it, we have the funding, blah, 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 that's fine. Gary went on vacation two weeks and thank God he's back now, I hope he's not here now, I hope he addresses it. Also, we've got reports from DA Sullivan on the general condition of the building, why the roof leaked and this and that, we haven't received them yet from the Building Reuse Committee.
We haven't, like, select board, but you guys have it?
We have not, no.
So the reuse committee had it?
That's correct, so we got to get that and make this happen. The Building Reuse Committee is just about ready to dissolve, they've got to solve these problems or get these last issues done, which are always difficult.
Do you think we should have a joint meeting with the Building Reuse Committee?
I think it's a wonderful idea, sir.
I move that we have a joint meeting with the Building Reuse Committee to resolve the outstanding issues in this building.
I see.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to have a joint meeting, so duly authorized with the Building Reuse Committee.
And how about asking if part of that, that they supply us with a formal request from us to them for the punch list that's, that's there?
Okay.
Wonderful.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
And can, going back to this Council on Aging list.
Where's, if I have that in my packet or is it here? It's in the drawer.
What are we going to do about this? They'd like all the work done by August 5th.
They're going to get it done when we get it done.
Well, I'm saying, somehow I think we should send a letter saying, room's there for your use. Who's it or losing?
Who's the proper authority at this point to send the letter? Is it the B R C or us?
It's us, it's our building and it's been approved, it's, the only thing B R C has left is a punch list. And a kitchen if they so desire.
Right.
I would. Somebody came in for the painting, that they were supposed to come in.
Well, no, all I know is that Keith from Five Star has been here, you know, many times, looking at different things and fixing little things here and there. I had just heard, caught wind of, I think maybe Joe Muse had talked to him or somebody, and they said, oh, we'll finish the painting, but it just, it just doesn't get done. And it's, again, these lingering, like, three, four issues, the door, a couple doors, and, and I think that there's still this, you know, not miscommunication, but just, just, we're not.
Can I amend my motion to add that Five Star should be here and DA Sullivan should be here with the Building Reuse Committee?
I think it's a fabulous idea, I was just going to say, I mean, I don't, I really don't understand why we've waited so long to have Five Star come to the table because we really, we just get a lot of hearsay, you know, collectively from the committee, the project manager, the clerk, and it's kind of like this all the time. Everybody's saying, well, that person's supposed to have a list and they're supposed to do that and they're supposed to do that.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have a formal request go out to the Building Reuse Committee and a separate formal request on our letterhead going to Sullivan and to Five Star, that they are requested to be at this meeting.
I think, and I think they'll be here because they want to resolve it, they just want to get that definitive direction from somebody.
And to explain to us why it's not done.
Right.
But can we just say to them, if they come and they resolve some of these problems, can we save $10,000 or some money? I mean, can we put a little carrot in front of it?
No, they either resolve all of them or they don't.
Oh, and they, just some of them, so you can at least organize it so that these things are done.
At this point in time, I would tell them that you're not going to get any money, they may get sued if they don't get them done.
We'll get sued back and we'll use it.
Yeah, I don't think you need that, Jackie, because they know the money's there, you know, they, they want the money, they, I don't know that this has been a profitable They, I don't know that this has been a profitable project for them, so they need that money.
Have they come to here to talk before, I mean, why haven't they come?
No, I don't think, I don't think Five Star's ever been asked to come to any meetings that I'm aware of.
Never tossed, never tossed, they've been, obviously, at the Building Reuse Committee.
I don't, I've never seen them at the Building Reuse Committee, no.
That's fair, never been.
No, no. Only the project manager, and the clerk, and the architect, we've never asked the GC to come. And I think that's been a problem, because, again, you've got so many cooks in the kitchen, pardon my expression.
Well, and the architect must be out of this by now, right?
Well, the architect's out of it, yeah, I don't think you're gonna get him, him here, but, but, you know, he's generated final punch list, and, and he had, and my understanding was, he, there was supposed to be an engineer from his firm coming to review that final punch list yesterday. I think there's a problem we have. The air conditioning, okay. Not the punch list, okay. So, so maybe that's a different person, because we've also been having ongoing issues.
I was just gonna say, which reminds me, that every day at night I walk in the building, we have a ladder up against the building, so they can...
So, we can reset the AC.
Reset the AC, two units keep tripping, where they want them reset.
It's an engineering problem, and I think that's, they're trying to determine it.
Of course, it's not our problem.
Yeah, they're trying to fix it, that's why he was here, the engineer from RW Hall was here, and he's, now, I believe, they've figured out what it is, and they're gonna fix it. But it's been, again, it's been kind of a, you know, the electrical said this thing, the, the programming, you know, the computer people said this thing, and it's just been a constant finger-pointing extravaganza.
Barbara, what are you saying, Barbara? The ladder up against the building is a hazard for children, climbing up the ladder, that should be taken now.
Barbara, I'll take it home tonight, I'll help us all, because I need a ladder at home.
Just hope it's not hot in the next couple days, I know. I was gonna say, if it's hot in the next couple days, Doug, though, you'll need to bring it back.
So, can we, did I, do I, am I clear on my motion?
So, there's a second motion, then, to include in this meeting, then, representatives from Five Star, the general contractor, as well as...
DA Sullivan, the project manager.
Project manager. Okay, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a discussion, if I may, sir.
Sure.
I think it would behoove us all, and it would be very smart for us to have a letter from DA Sullivan and/or the Building Reuse Committee, as to all of the things that have not been done, and the problems we have, before we have this meeting, that way, when we have it, we can do this like intelligent people.
And then let's make a request to DA Sullivan, or no, it would be from the architect's got the punch list.
Well, there's, there's two lists, and it's my understanding, there's the punch list, which is the original list that came from October fifteenth, that substantial completion of the things that were originally found. Then the second list has been that closeout resolution log that you've seen a couple times, and that list has just continued to, you know, some of, it's been kind of globbed all together with some of the warranty stuff, but John Fleming, was it?
John Fleming.
John Fleming and Gary were here, I'd say probably three weeks ago, and they went through the building again, and John Fleming, who was the clerk, clerk on part of the project, he wasn't there the whole time, was to generate a list, the final list of all the unfinished things, and that was supposed to be turned over to the Building Reuse Committee at their meeting that, that following night or within a couple days, and that list has not been shown to the Building Reuse Committee, although we've been told it's been sent to somebody, to maybe to Five, to Five Star.
Can we ask for a copy of any punch list that still has outstanding items on it?
Yeah, we should, we should do that to the Building Reuse Committee, the selectmen. Another point I would like to make, before we have this joint meeting, this is very, very important. We had extensive water damage here this winter because of the snow, that's what we think it is, obviously. Now, the architect said you could test the windows to ensure that they were installed properly. From what I understand and believe, at the last Building Reuse Committee meeting, they are under the impression the selectmen did not want to have this done because it was too costly, and I find that difficult to believe. I wanna know where this is now, because if we have a test, I think that what Colley said, this is the architect, if we have a test and the windows pass, then the town must pay for this test, which is several thousand dollars. If it fails, then they pay for the test, whoever installed the windows, and they get to repair everything. Well, I think we're foolish if we don't, no matter what this thing costs, I think it was like three grand or something, we have the test, take the liability for it, and see what's causing this water damage, because winter's right around the corner, and so we've gotta get that done.
I agree with you.
So, should we, okay.
Should we do that with the Building Reuse Committee, take a motion then, at that meeting, tell them?
Well, maybe in the letter, we should say, what is the status of the testing of the windows, blah, 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 and, and that way, they can come back with us, and I know they're under the impression, because we discussed the last meeting, the select board did not wanna do that, and I find that hard to believe, I think it's hearsay.
So, what do you want to do?
So, we had a long motion.
Well, that's all right, let's get it done. We should, we should also send a letter to the...
Let's make, what about making a separate motion?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so the first motion was made, seconded, voted on and passed, which was to have a joint meeting, right? Second motion was to get any punch lists that are still available, to the extent that they have open items. Now, we need to vote on that one.
And what, is there a second now?
There was a second, it over there. So, that motion number two, those in favor?
Aye, now your motion.
Third motion.
Okay, the select board should ask the Building Reuse Committee how much a test would be to test the windows where we had water damage this past winter, and what the status of that is. That way, we're gonna know exactly what we've got to do or must do. So, we, we should have that before the meeting.
Are they the appropriate people to ask, the Building Reuse?
Yes, because the architect was in charge of this, and he was gonna line it up, however, he's, he's technically done with the job, but, you know, we could ask him, okay, how much was this, and what do we go through, and blah, blah, blah.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and the Board of Selectmen will ask the Building Reuse Committee, how much will it cost to test the windows, and what are the potential liabilities there? What's the structure of the test?
Wonderful.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, no further discussion. Okay. Projects, anything else?
Can I just go back to what Doug said about the Reuse Committee taking on the kitchen? Is that, is that still a part of this? That always confuses me, when the...
Can I make a suggestion about that, if I, if I can, I mean, I don't know what your answer's to me, but one of you had asked me, too, about the, about, or maybe, I, I saw on the agenda for the Building Reuse Committee, they were considering disbanding, and I think one of you had asked me about, you know, what that means for the kitchen. And I think that, you know, you, you have, your, your charge to the Building Reuse Committee initially was that they would stay in effect, or the committee would stay together, until the completion of the project. The project is this, you know, the, the building, and now your final punch list, your final open items. The kitchen is not in the project. I mean, the money maybe is available through BRC, maybe, although I'm not sure if that's all you have left, I don't know.
Several thousand left for the completion of that kitchen, yes.
But I guess in order to expedite it, it seems like if you could keep the project separate, close that out, you know, kinda close out the committee, and then work on the kitchen as a board, because you have, you know, you're already working on, with the Board of Health, and, you know, you already have, some of the components are already in the building, it seems like it might expedite the kitchen.
It could, but, you know, we could discuss that at the meeting.
Yeah.
And go from there, I, I don't wanna go another two weeks or so, but it is what it is. You know, Gary has all the tools to do it, because he has all the expertise there, with the architects and engineers and DA Sullivan, blah, 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 and so he could very well do it. Plus, he has the funds. But if, if he doesn't choose to do that, that's fine, then we're eager to grasp, because I wanna get those people in there.
Well, and I think we send them, I, I'd like to suggest we send a memo to the Council on Aging that if, if they choose not to go in there because there's some paint not on the walls, that's their choice, but the building is available to them if they wish to use it.
They have an objective to going in there.
Well, they, they basically have sent you their sort of counterproposal of they would like to have all this work done before August 8th. So, they would like to move in, and they say in their comments that, you know, they're gonna have three people working there soon, and they, the community office upstairs is not gonna accommodate three staff people. So, at the very least, I mean, ideally, it'd be nice if Jen and her assistant and, and the volunteer coordinator can move into the office, but I think the board is concerned, the Council on Aging is concerned that, you know, once they move in there, then this stuff will become possibly less of a priority. So, they're hoping to just get it done, you know, before they move in.
Doug and I offered to do it.
I mean, just...
Couple hours? Really?
Yeah.
You should see me paint. With the work done.
Well, no, I do think, I, I think I remember Jen saying that Ed, you know, the Highway Department had agreed to do it, but they needed to have the weather, you know, bad weather, some bad weather, and...
We shouldn't be doing.
No, no.
No, I know.
It's the principle.
It's a principle, but at the same time, you get it, don't you?
Well, the other side of the coin is, I mean, the Council on Aging, there's nothing so detrimental to anyone's health in there. We're not asking them to move into something that's not healthy or anything else. And, you know, if they choose not to move in because the painting's not done... I'm sorry.
Then it's not gonna do it.
Yeah, but then you're gonna get into, then we get into the problem, the contract, we start doing it, the contractor was gonna do it, now I'm not gonna do it because you didn't do it right, and... It's the contractor's responsibility, we should not be stepping in to do anything that we were supposed to do in the beginning.
And I know the painting of that room was on the punch list, I believe. There's portions of it, again, I think they left behind the appliances undone, but there's portions of the room that were not, were clearly just not completed, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay, so, we'll meet on this.
Well, I, where's that?
I just wanna throw one more shot into this horse, how's that?
Okay.
It's a dead horse already.
That's all right. This shot, this Council on Aging room is really beginning to upset me, and I think it all of us. Now, day one, with the Building Reuse Committee, and I gotta make sure everybody understood, day one, we were told there will not be a commercial kitchen in there, there will not be major cooking, where there will not be major entertainment. The Council on the Aging seems to think they're still gonna do it, and we owe it to them, and I'm getting sick and tired of it. And I'm getting sick and tired of the Council on Aging putting a bunch of crap outside, saying it's been a hundred and seventy-three days since this place was opened, and it's still not open. We've had problems with it, and if they, they can't understand it, they should come to us and not pull that crap, because that makes me wanna say no, you'll never get in there, I'll give it to the veterans. I would like a little bit of cooperation here.
And to that extent, I, I, I'm a little offended by the letter. The Council on Aging discussed moving to Senior Center at their July twentieth. Following are the requirements.
Yep.
Painting, wall without windows in office, all areas around kitchen, corner of entryway, outside trim around entryway windows, outside entryway overhang.
Well, I think it's okay for us to express ourselves here, like, but they have legitimate concerns about they've been last on the list, so I don't think we should...
They've been last on the list because we were trying to do the best job we can, and now we're trying to get them in there, and they're saying they won't go in because the entryway's not painted.
According to the law, we, we gotta give them a place to meet, that's it, not the Taj Mahal, and this is beginning to really put a fire under me.
Okay, at the risk of sticking to the agenda, some of the time, we're quite over, maybe we, you okay on this?
Oh, that's wonderful.
Everybody have last flog at this dead horse?
Can I ask, what was the...
Ten seconds.
The custodial, your contracting average, custodial DA Sullivan, has that been decided?
No.
No, it has not been. The way the budgeting was done is, we have a custodian that has expressed his intention to stay through this fiscal year and retire right after the first of the year. So, we budgeted half the year of wages, and then we did put the second half of the year in expenses, so with the intent of doing a contract, but it's really the same amount of money, so if we did, you know, if the board was, wanted to hire an employee, they could do that as well, as long as it was in the same parameters as what we currently have. But, to be honest, it's, it's a much larger building with much more custodial needs than we ever have had, so that's where the contract came in. And we did get a quote from one company for the amount that we have in the budget, and, and a breakdown of what they could do for that. And that would include the whole building, too, just so you know, that also included the Senior Center, but not the kitchen. It was never to clean the kitchen. Just the rest of the room.
Give it, don't give them a kitchen.
If it proves thus effective, the library has such small custodial needs.
Lump it together.
If that was possible, I'd certainly be able to explore it, but if you...
Sure, it's a good idea.
To save money to the town.
And, and I just wanna touch on that, too, the, the one thing that, that I've left that Reggie's gonna have to, to take care, pick up, but I had been working with, I talked to, reached out to the, to the principal at Norris months ago about getting our floors done, the big, you know, stripping and waxing, because the, the floors, when we moved in, really were not prepared properly for even the maintenance that needs to get done to them, the cleaning. So, I've been working with, with Principal Collins, he's been great, and what ended up happening is I had said, well, we'll pay for the supplies, and if you need to hire, you know, pay overtime, you know, give me a quote, basically, give me the cost. So, he had gone back to the school committee, and my understanding is the school committee said, we'll do, we'll, we'll give you the labor for nothing, we, we're not gonna charge you, so you just buy the supplies. So, we went ahead and purchased the supplies, the, the two janitors that were going to do the job came over several times and looked at it, and then just last week, sent me an email saying, we're not gonna do it because the school committee wants them to do it within their regular work hours, and they do not. So, I think the next step is that, I think you really should go back to the school committee or the principal and say, you know, 'cause...
So, the custodians are refusing to work here during their regular school, regular work hours?
Correct. I think they were hoping it would be overtime or additional hours for them. Now, and I haven't, and I haven't spoken to Bill since I got this email, it was just like middle of last week, so... But I guess what I'm suggesting is the school committee, you know, had sort of made a handshake deal with the Board of Selectmen to provide this service, and the actual individuals that were gonna do the work have said no. Now, I don't know whether the school committee can order them to do it, but I just wanna let you know, you got supplies sitting out in the hallway that we're gonna pay for, and they've got the equipment to do it, and the labor that's trained to do it.
Where'd the supplies come from?
I'm sorry?
Where'd the supplies come from? Where'd they come from?
Oh, they came from Carter and McLeod, a company that we...
We see if we can return them before it gets to be too late, and we'll fight this battle about who's doing the work.
Yeah, we can do that.
My suggestion is return the supplies, and we'll fight the battle about who's gonna do the work, and if we have to buy them again, we do. But don't keep the supplies to the point where they become worthless, and we can't ship them back.
Okay.
Do they degrade over time?
I'm thinking they, they probably won't take them back after a couple of months, and if they sit out there long enough, they're, they will degrade.
And I think they, they may be amenable to that, certainly, the representative's been very helpful, and he only got involved because the custodians, the custodians basically ordered the supplies for us.
Ask Mr. McLeod if he had some people he might suggest to do the work.
Yeah, he probably would, probably would.
And they've probably some guys out there who are looking for the work, as opposed to our custodians, who might not be looking.
Okay. But I just wanted to let you know, that was somewhat disappointing, because we really, I was hoping it was gonna get done in the next couple of weeks, so...
You can use the, I don't have money to pay an extra, if there was money to pay the library's custodial.
These are machines, I don't know whether he, he knows how to operate.
He worked at school.
Oh, well.
We don't have a sheet, but I mean, that's not a chore.
Well, next thing we'll find out, they won't give us the machines. You know, we'll have to ransom the machines, even though we own them. Well, can we talk to that gentleman and see whether he's interested in doing?
Cleaver?
Sure.
I mean, before you send this stuff back, quick?
Do you want me to do that, or no?
Oh, yeah, I'll move that you'd speak to him about, the only, you know what you're gonna have to do, though? Well, he's a, he's a town employee, though, right?
He's a town employee.
So, we'd be okay, we don't have to bid it or anything else like that, right?
If he's a town employee, we don't.
We can just pay him out.
That's the advantage, right.
Okay, okay. Three oh three, one four five oh is his number, okay, great. Anything further, then, before we move on to executive sessions?
We've got the dead horse, we've been...
Is the dead horse sufficiently dead where everybody's on your tab?